Good evening. Thank you for joining us. It is 6:30. We're going to call the Castle Hills Special City Council meeting to order. Special City Council meeting and budget work session number two to order determiner quorum is present, quorum is present. First, we will start with the invocation. I believe we'll have our birthday boy lead us in the Fudge of Allegiance. I'm sorry. Thank you, sir. Happy birthday to you. I don't think we have anybody signed up for citizen comments, so we will proceed into our work session. First up, we have presentation discussion of preliminary FY 2023 budget for the Police Department. Mr. Rappley.
Mayor and Council, just as we had conducted last night, the departmental discussion on budget, we will start tonight with the Police Department. So I asked the Chief Zunica to come up, give a presentation. You should have a copy of the presentation at the dice.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. I promise to keep it sweet and short. So on this slide, talking about this year's budget, 2.8 million. As far as issues and concerns with any current line items, right now, the there's a couple of them that are of concern that we've we've gone over a little bit or go or going to be going over, which is the overtime and comp time. A little brief on that is obviously y'all all know that we were short initially seven patrol officers and several dispatchers. And so trying to fill those slots and having to overlap, keeping an officer that normally works eight hour shift may stay over and work a 12 hour shift and then an oncoming shift officer will come in and fill in those extra four hours on on top of their regular eight hours. So that happened periodically. Or calling in an off duty officer to 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 fill in a fill in those gaps. Same thing with dispatch. At some point, they went to 12 hour shifts and we tried to, we we got out of that pretty fast because I know it's it takes a toll in there. Sitting in that dispatch console for 12 hours, it can be taxing. The other one is well, as far as the overtime and the comp time, the officers have the option of either taking overtime or comp time. A lot of them bank the the overtime and and converted to the comp time because they can take that time off at a later time or, you know, as far as a vacation order. The other one is fuel. We all know, obviously, with the price of fuel is increasing, I believe that right now. We're probably just under $5,000 from hitting the budgeted amount for the year and we're just barely at half mid-year. So those are two of the line items that are of concern at this point for for the remainder of this this budget. The next dot is or marker is budget budget is staffing level and current levels. Currently, we have two dispatcher and three police officer vacant positions. The department has a total of 29 assigned positions. That's including everybody from dispatch all the way to myself. So currently, we have 24 of those that are are filled. And and then two of those are presently in the academy. So but they're on they're already on on a on our payroll. Breakdown of the divisions within the Police Department, the Police Patrol, the uniformed officers, there's 15 officers, there should be 15 officers. Five per shift. We have three shifts. CID or the Criminal Investigations Division has three officers. You have Detective Sergeant and then two detectives. And then Communications has six with one of those being the Chief Dispatcher. And then the other five being dispatchers and we have two positions there that are vacant. Traffic Division or the Traffic Enforcement Officer, that was that we'll talk about that one briefly here in the next couple of slides. That was one that the council last year voted on and unanimously approved. So we have a Traffic Enforcement Officer position. And then our for admin, which is myself, the Captain, the Lieutenant and our Administrative Secretary in the admin role. We do have one HIDA officer and then we have a warrant officer. Those are not factored into the the 29 assigned positions because they're one of them is is contract and the other one is somewhat supplemented by by HIDA. There any questions on this slide?
Chief, I have a quick question. PD typically runs with a vacancy, correct?
I'm sorry, one more time.
I just remember historically PD runs with a vacancy.
Historically, probably for the last, well, at least. And we we may get full for for this month and then next month, somebody else decides to. And so we'll go right back to. But yes, we we.
So I guess my point is there's nothing new. Then this is kind of what's normal.
Not this extreme. The last time that we were to this point, well, I take it back as far as to the the amount of vacancies that we had was when I got hired. They had five or six opening as well. So we've never been that low. We've managing to get out of that that hole. And and we're down, like I said, to to three positions for patrol.
So the vacancy is normal, but the amount of vacancies is what's abnormal.
Correct. Got you. Okay.
Council, do we have any questions? Mr. Joyce.
Chief, can you please? I know you talked a little bit about the impact of the vacancies, but at this level where your two dispatchers down and three patrolmen down, could you please explain the impact on your officers and the time they work each day? You you mentioned at one point that they work sometimes they work eight hours a day and then have to add another four hour shift to help make up for the shortfall. Is that what we're doing now or is it a little something different now?
Well, we've kind of slimmed it down a little bit since we've got two officers that are have been released, but it's still not lightening up that low. There's still several of those other positions that that have to be filled. And and what happens is these officers are working those after extra hours and and there's other agencies that do have that that work 12 hour shifts, but they're larger agencies that are continuously they keep them busy and sometimes it it'll, you know, especially graveyard little. It'll get slow at point and and officers get tired. They get tired and there's always an increase of of accidents or the risk of accidents because they they're just so fatigued. And same thing with dispatchers, you know, they there's always a risk of them missing, you know, something you because they just they get they get fatigued. The guys are doing swell, you know, picking up those those hours. You know, we don't hear them complain. They 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 do what they need to do. They know they know what we're at, but it's it is taxing.
Thank you.
Mr. May.
For the benefit of of those present, could you describe the HIDA position?
Yes, sir. So HIDA is a high, high intensity drug task force that's with the DEA. The DEA that's a position that we apply for and 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 they accept and we we assign an officer to work drug drug interaction interdiction.
And I know it's not completely connected to the general budget, but do you know what the forfeiture funds are this year compared to last year?
I I don't know the the numbers offhand. We'd I'd have to get those, get those for you. As far as the figures.
So by the time we get done with the overall budget, we'll know what those funds are. And of course, there are limitations on those expenditures. But you'll have that by the time we have the final budget proposal.
Well, yeah, but I mean, I think what he's asking is what we have right now on in on hand.
Correct. That that would be helpful going into the budgetary process.
Right. We yeah, we we can have that. Of course, there's there's cases that are still pending that we have no control over the feds. You know, they decide when they're going to release those funds and how much or is is allocated to this agency.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Paul.
I guess we're still getting funding elsewhere for that position, correct?
That is correct. I clarify that today. So I guess what happens is we initially pay for his salary and then we get reimbursed a portion of that of of his salary.
Again, with forfeiture funds, council has absolutely nothing to do with it. That's complete under the control of the Police Department and your discretion and micro.
That is correct.
Thank you.
So some of the things that we've done this year, some initiatives that we've done this year to try to to attract officers to apply as well as make sure that we try to retain the officers that we have. We officer, we've offered a sign on bonuses. We offered a sign on bonus. We offer into new hires for a three year commitment. They they sign a three year commitment. And and today, we've had three officers or three two officers accept the $5,000 sign on bonus. And then one dispatcher accept the $3,000 allocation. On top of that, we also offer the Police Academy sponsorship. If there's somebody that is a good candidate, they they test. They go through all the testing and they pass everything. The backgrounds, then we will send them to the academy and that's where we have right now. We have two two cadets in the academy. And roughly, that's it's a cost of about $3,100 per cadet. They don't have the option to take both. It's it's, you know, it's either if you're certified officers and you can take the $5,000 bonus. But if you're not certified, the only option you have is a $3,100. Will we pay for the academy? And then that three year agreement that those cadets signs agree to does not begin until they graduated. Didn't be it didn't start the day of the sign of the agreement. And then finally, trying to retain our current employees, you know, just offer them something we came up with a retention bonus and offered a $3,500 offer for a three year commitment and we had 17 members except that retention bonus.
Mr. Espin, you're coming.
A question, Chief. What budget line does this all come out of?
Salaries.
Out of salaries. Because I was going to ask that earlier. So I I assume that although your overtime account is running dry, that your salary savings are noteworthy.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Presently, we have two possibility of three experienced officers that will be tested next week. So maybe one, hopefully two will come out of that that we can get to, you know, one or two more certified peace officers on the street. Of course, they still need to go through all the background testing and then their field training programs, another 12 weeks.
Chief, would you mind clarifying for council and for everybody present and listening? The three year commitment, I know you structured it in such a way that it minimizes the risk for the city, right?
That is correct. So what we did with that is we, when I say $3,500 for the three year commitment, we didn't. Well, I take it back on the $3,500 that was paid upfront because our current employees, they've been here a while. As far as the sign on bonuses, that $5,000 or the $3,000 is broken up over the three years. Initially, they get whatever a third is of that 5,000 for the when they complete their their FTO and then at 18 months, they get their second portion. And then at the end of the 36 months, they will get their final payout. And same thing with the dispatchers, thousand, thousand, thousand over the next three years.
Perfect. Thank you. I just want to make sure the council and everybody watching knows that we're not just giving the money completely upfront. There's some strategy to ensure that we're protecting the city's interest.
Right. And and like I said, on the as far as the current employees, we we found it. I mean, they're already here and and, you know, we want to get them to stay and I mean, obviously, they still have the option to to buy out the contract if they if they elect to to move on somewhere else. They that's stipulated in the agreement that they will reimburse a proactive or prorated amount back to the city.
Mayor and Council as well, the agreement was vetted out, reviewed by the Employment Attorney and Mr. Schnall's firm as well. So and then again, when you talk about sign on bonus in this discussion, other cities are trying to do this to be proactive to recruit officers to their city. Thank you.
The last bullet there was the Traffic Enforcement Officer position. Somebody may recall that last year that was approved under a one year sunset agreement or sunset clause. Effective with the 22 operating budget, which started this January. The position was filled at the end of January. We were fortunate enough, we had lost an officer because he wanted to, he thought it was going to be greener somewhere else and and I I offered him a position to come back and and he took it, which was Officer Singleton. And he's been doing, as you can see, he's been doing awesome in the from February 1st through June 30th. He's written 853 citations. Those are citations, not warnings. There's none of that's factored in there. If you and you can also see conversely patrol officers during that same period have issued 934 citations. So you with the patrol officers, obviously, they're handling calls, accidents, reports, the thefts at HEB, whatever, but I I think that the traffic enforcement enforcement officers is doing really well thus far. I think that courts will be able to elaborate a little bit further and more as well. So any questions on this?
I do have a question and trying to toe the line here, focus on what we need to because we don't want to get concerned with ticket writing and finances, but I would imagine, given the amount of citations, he's likely paying for his position himself, correct?
But, yes, sir.
Okay. I know the enforcement's substantial as well. We see him pulling people over nonstop and this also doesn't include warnings, as you mentioned, correct?
That is correct. I believe out of out of that same timeframe, he's issued 91 warnings. So he's gaining compliance. I did have a conversation with him the other day and he said that he's noticing the traffic is slowing down. I don't know if any of you are noticing that people are slow now. You're gonna have the occasional knuckleheads that just don't refuse to cooperate and continue speeding through the city, but he's noticing that it's sometimes it's slow for him that I I don't, nobody wants to challenge me and and so I can, I want to make, I want to come into their lives. So. The next slide, the this is my proposals for this year. And I'm basically just touching over what I see that are their topics that are 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 going to be going over this year. The first one is that training professional, actually, that one, we're a little lower than the budgeted amount. And the only reason that happened is again due to staff shortages, not being able to send officers to training. We 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 did make every effort to send officers to mandatory state required training or whatever that they needed. But a lot of those other training requests, we just weren't able to to fulfill them because again, not being able to to manage the the staff shortages. And the only reason I'm asking for an increase on this is because next year, and again, you see what's going on across the country. There's a lot of other mandates that are coming down. You know, from the state and and we want to get a little bit more aggressive on our training with the officers next year. Hopefully towards the end of this year, we will be real close to full and we can concentrate on getting these officers the training they need and that they deserve. One of the other things I want to touch up on on the same line item is several years ago, somebody may not remember, we used to host training here FBI Lita, we used to host it here in in chambers and we put up a wall of curtains and then set it up as a classroom. And then after that, we wound up relocating over to 1100, the one Cast Hills. They we were able to acquire a suite there for free for a little while and we hosted training there for about two, two more years. And then they've got them. They went under new management and they asked us to leave because we weren't paying rent. We're presently initially, I had proposed that we, you know, we would spend some funds and remodel the community room. The only caveat to that, like Mr. Paul had mentioned, is that the funds that we use would would be used only for police. Now, I'm not saying that the room would not be used by anybody else. But we would have to maintain control of that communion room because of the funds. So that what we're doing this year, because we want to try to start hosting training here again, we're looking, we're working with one Cast Hills and trying to acquire another suite over there, but we we will probably enter into an agreement with them. Hopefully for two or three years and that way we have all, you know, tables, chairs or whatever in that classroom. On top of that, it'll be available for you. So you know, if y'all need to have an offsite meeting or whatever the case is. You know, that it'll serve that purpose as well. The next line item is the medical.
Chief, real quick on that. Can you clarify? It's not general fund. It's a little forfeiture.
That is correct. This, what I'm talking about is is coming out of forfeiture, either federal or state funds. It's not a general budget. The next one is a medical employee. This line item covers when we're talking about new hires. There roughly about $850 per applicant is what's allocated for testing. When I say testing, there's psychological testing, which is mandated. A polygraph, which is not mandated. However, we like to use it because we it is a valuable tool that weeds out some people that are being deceptive. Then you have your medical, physical, drug screening, and then we also have random drug screens. And of course, of course, a post accident drug screens. And we've this year, we've managed to go over that one substantially. So that's why I'm kind of trying to increase a little bit. Hopefully, we won't go over next year on that line item if we get full house. The next one is fuel. That one's almost one that doesn't need a briefing is just the cost of fuel is increasing. And I know that the city managers mentioned about maybe looking at trying to get into a state contract. I don't know where we're at with that, but fuel is it feels not cheap and we're we're going through it. One of the other things too, I want to point out is I know that some several agencies around the country are because they've depleted their their budget for fuel that they're becoming pro reactive instead of proactive as they're just sitting at station waiting for the next call instead of going out there and patrolling because they just don't have the money for fuel. They're being conservative. I don't want to get there. Building maintenance. We all know the state of the the building. It's we're like me, we're kind of limping along. We are consistently spending money on on plumbing. I know that this year we came out of capital purchase that replaced that sewer line. But it seems like we always seem to have trouble every time the voting or elections goes on in the community room. Something goes wrong with the toilets or here in the lobby valves, the air conditioning or HVAC, they're just they're they're failing, you know, and we're just sinking money into these into these systems. So that's the reason for the increase in 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 that line item. Vehicle maintenance supplies and and tires. Again, that's another increase that I'm looking at slightly. The cost, it's not so much the cost of parts like, for example, brakes, brake pads and rotors. What's eaten us up is that labor, the the labor charges are substantially high. On average, it's about it runs about $550 for a brake job on a vehicle on on either the front end or the back. It's it'll it'll be over $1,000 for a full brake job all the way around. Same time tires. We all know how road hazards up on the highway, screws, bolts, metal, whatever, it tears up these tires. And while we tried to salvage them as long as we can get them patched, the tire both discount and Firestone will not repair them. If the damage is too close to the the shoulder of the of the tires, they've got to be within a certain point. If not, the title, the tires totaled. So again, that's that's another reason why we're asking for a little bit of increase there. And then lastly is equipment purchase. Trying to replace some old equipment that just it's old worn, whatever. It just it's beyond life. We've also tried to replace or add more ballistic shields to the units. I I don't think every one of the units is full. We're pretty close and those run about $1,500 each. On top of that, we're also wanting to install a first aid, a tactical first aid kit to every unit. As we all know, the mandates are that hopefully it never happens, but if it does, we have an officer involved shooting. The officer is now required to render aid to that shooting victim until further assistance arrives. So at present, they may carry a tourniquet and maybe some quick clot or whatever, but we want to expand that and get a bigger kit in in each of the cars. So that's kind of the reason I'm I'm asking for that. The total cost is is around $16,000 for all the proposals. I I do realize that a lot of 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 the equipment, you know, we we can also acquire from crime control. So that's why I'm not really going too aggressive with with general budget. Any questions on this line?
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Joyce.
Chief, at the risk of taking us down a bunny trail, do you consider your officers well trained in active shooter situations?
They're trained. I'm not going to say that they're well trained. We can all, including myself, can go, I can always use more training. In fact, over the last three weeks. Captain coordinated a training scenario at one of the Bear County shooting shoot houses down on South Side. Mayor was there as well. And and the officers went through drills with ammunition drills. They actually shoot at each other with basically like paintball, but just smaller rounds. We are planning on doing a full blown drill late September or October here locally and with other agencies, but we're still working those logistics out.
Okay, so it's so it's not going to impact the budget?
Well, I let me speak to that real quick. Sorry if I don't mind, if you don't mind. Chief and I had talked about this and I committed to finding the funds to do an advanced hands on multi-agency training for Castle Hills, but also to include our mutual aid partners, Alamo Heights, Leon Valley, Almost Park. And preliminarily, my idea was to allocate money from the Child Safety Fund, which is very restricted on how we could use the money, but I can't imagine a better use of child safety than this type of training. And that was going to be one of my questions. So the monies, I believe the monies in there, I'm not sure how much they need. It's a pretty substantial training, probably for two to three days, chief.
That is correct. Our plan is the first two days, like I said, Thursday, Friday would be the training, just basically doing the same thing that the officers did over the last three weeks. And then on the final day, it would be a full blown drill along with fire department, everybody hands on deck. I mean, everything would be lifelike simulation, you know, with injuries and so forth, simulated injuries.
So if I, Mr. Joyce, are you done or can I jump on? Okay. So if I, Mr. Joyce, are you done or can I jump on? Okay, chief, it's my hope that we could get to do this sooner rather than later. My my intent was to be able to bring this agenda item for the budget amendment to council in August. So I'm not sure where you're at, but hopefully you can find that to make it work.
We're, we're working on it. We're still communicating with fire department and getting our list together. We've, we've kind of already, Captain already pretty much jumped on on ahead of the wagon there and has ordered a lot of some more. Equipment that that we need because it it does take time and actually it's not projected to be until the end of August, maybe Septemberish. So he he kind of got ahead of that. So it's going to fall around that timeframe. Yes, if we could get it earlier, it'd be great, but there's a lot of logistics. We, the way we wanted to do it is a lot different than. What you're seeing right now is on television, just doing drills, you know, going into classrooms or schools and so on. We want to do the whole thing where it's, we're responding and. You know, fire, you know, we're going and clearing, removing victims to a medium zone or a cold zone and then letting fire. EMS, whatever, treat the victims.
Well, I think counsel is ready to hear something like that as soon as y'all are. Mr. Is ready to comment?
Back to our budget question here, and this may be a little bit tensions. I'm thinking about the fuel costs. Are you seeing any? Police ready EVs coming onto the market? Electric vehicles?
I've seen some, but I'm not, I haven't done any research. I know I've seen some articles on them. Some agencies are using utilizing them now. I just don't know what they're. How they're, they're functioning, you know, if they're, I don't know what their limitations are. So that that's something else we can look at. I know that we're going to have to probably look at that in the future, but as of right now, I have not, I don't have any.
Mr. May.
Chief, I just want to backtrack just a bit. There's going to be some evidence based changes in protocol in schools. And this community has at least five significant schools. Would part of the follow up on your training be. A collaborative effort to reach out to each and every one of the schools, maybe appear on site, maybe some, you know. At least some protocol printing, because it seems to me that it's both an inside and outside. Collaborative effort that's going to save lives for that kind of active shooter. What are your thoughts on that?
Right now, we 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 do communicate with each of the schools. I don't know what year it was back, it was back when Chief Davis was still here. He. Came up with a, there's a binder that's in every one of the cars and then it's, he worked, he communicated with all the schools at the time. And we were able to get, you know, some of those protocols, maps of the school. On top of that, our officers are required at least at a minimum twice a year, at the beginning, at the end of the year, whenever. Especially if they're new officers, obviously, to go and walk through each of the school campuses in our city. And that's familiarize themselves with the exits, you know, where where every, you know, every possible door is available. That could be accessed. But yes, in answer to your question, absolutely, we we want to start increasing our. Communications and and contacts with with each of the schools so that we're better prepared, not just. Our intent is to do a drill at one school, but we will reach out to the others and invite them as well to partake in this drill so that. They also have a knowledge of of what what's going on or what can happen.
Captain.
We are working with Antonio right now. We have a. During this, we're going to use blanks, we're going to use. Any calls that we can to help them get used to the sounds of gunfire and always this. You hear gun shot, I can knock around, but I'm sure that is here something. With that gunshot, those are vital seconds that we get to save lives. So. Yes, we're starting to have, we've already had another school, we've got surgery, it's something we've done at businesses to this point, now we're going to move this towards the school.
Counsel, do we have any more questions for Chief Sunika?
The only other, I'm sorry. The only other item that I was going to touch up on is on, as far as capital purchase, I know that Chief Lattawick last night mentioned that our. Generator is generator for the cities also in probably September, October, maybe that it may be installed. We. We've been trying to maintain our generator, which obviously does not power the whole building, just powers a PD side first floor. But one of the things that once they install a new generator that. Maybe trying to get that old one removed as well as that propane tank. Maybe another.
Sounds good. Thank you, chief. Okay, next up, we have presentation discussion on the preliminary FY twenty twenty three budget from municipal court, Mr. Rappley.
Mayor, counsel, we have Judge McCall here to provide you a presentation to. Give you an overview of municipal court. Activities in municipal court and possibly needs for the court office for next year's budgets.
Mary Council, how are you doing tonight? I try to get through this pretty quick. The questions that I'm getting from from you guys and from just in general, people are saying, hey, where's the court at after the pandemic? So I'm going to give you guys a little bit of a, just a comparison from twenty seventeen to now, so y'all can kind of see numbers and then. And then, you know, we have a couple of things on our wish list and I apologize, I think Ryan jinxed me because a couple of my slides. Corrupt when we tried to print them. So I'll reemail those those two slides to you guys or three. But I'm going to, I'm going to go through it real quick. I'm going to spare you with all of all of the. Initial stuff that we we used to talk about because you guys all know me, you know what the court is, you know. Is it better than there? Sorry, sorry, Mr. Paul. Okay, so. As you guys probably already know, I think from last council meeting, we're, we're finally up to staff. We we hired Amy, our new. Assistant Court Clerk or Deputy Court Clerk. So. We're staffed up. Which which is nice. It took a little while in my private business. It's even been hard and I know you guys that are business people too. It's kind of hard to find people. To work right now. It's strange, but anyway. Court statistics wise, I wanted to just show you guys total amount of violations that come into our court. From the last, the last six years. So in twenty seventeen, we had eight thousand one hundred and fourteen total violations filed in the court that year. And twenty eighteen, eighty one oh seven, pretty consistent. In twenty nineteen, eighty one ninety. Twenty twenty comes along and of course the brakes got put on. We had. Even in the, in in that year, we still had three thousand six hundred and two cases filed. And twenty twenty one, we start to. You know, get get things going, but again, like the like, like the chief and the captain were saying, they were dealt like seven people. Last year probably. So, you know, those are the guys that actually feed the files and file the cases in the court. So where we were twenty twenty one, four thousand five hundred and fifty six cases. And in in twenty twenty two, already to. At by through June, we're at three thousand one hundred and seventy three cases. So then I want to, I wanted to break that down for you guys too, because you guys are talking traffic, you know, ordinance. There's, I can't discuss like revenue with you guys, but and and I'll be happy to get with Ryan. Or with you guys and I can provide numbers and 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 sheets where you guys can make, you know, you. To assist you in budgeting for for the court, but I'm not supposed to talk about quote, just like the police department, we're not supposed to talk about quotas and revenue, right? But the areas of concern for you guys are probably, you know, where are the cases that are filed in the court getting filed from? So in twenty seventeen, sixty seven hundred and fifty five cases were were traffic violations. Twelve hundred and twenty six cases were state law violations, which would be class C misdemeanors like. Simple assault, indecent exposure, open container. Paraphernalia, that's, that's what those cases are going to be. So twelve hundred and twelve, one thousand two hundred and twenty six. Cases were state law violations, forty cases were ordinance violations and ninety three cases were. Parking tickets, right? Parking violations, two to fives, you know, things like that. In in twenty eighteen, very similar numbers, six thousand seven hundred and twenty six cases were traffic. One thousand two hundred and thirty one cases were state law violations, forty seven were ordinances and a hundred and three were parking. Then twenty nineteen, again, very consistent, six thousand eight hundred and sixty four cases, traffic. One thousand two hundred and seven cases were going to be state law track, state law violations. Seventy one cases are going to be ordinance violations and forty eight are going to be parking. Then again, twenty twenty comes along, two thousand nine hundred and eighty eight of the total violations were traffic. Five hundred and seventeen were state law violations, sixty were ordinance. And thirty seven were parking. So. The parking in the ordinance violations, if you look, didn't suffer as much as the, as much as, as much as the other stuff that year. So twenty twenty one comes along, we got three thousand seven hundred and four. State law traffic violation, seven hundred and thirty nine. State law violations, misdemeanors, thirty seven ordinance, seventy six parking and as of. As of June this year, we already have two thousand seven hundred and twenty six traffic violations filed. Three hundred and forty seven state law violations, fifty one ordinance and forty nine traffic. I can tell you, I know the the chief and then put numbers up and you guys are probably concerned about the traffic. Program and everybody's asking me, is it busy? Is it getting busier? Yeah, it is getting busier. I think out of all of these, because not only does his tickets come in, the eight hundred and thirty seven some tickets, but the people that don't show up. Then they get an FTA. So as of the end of June, he was responsible for a thousand fifty six of the cases that out of all the total cases were. Strictly off of, off of the. The traffic officer and then the rest of the violations were were everybody else and their subsequent FTAs and what have you. So the another component of the of the court is the, which works hand in hand with the. Police department is the warrant officer. So I like to give you guys a report, hey, how did that do and how did it fare and what's going on? So. So in twenty seventeen, the warrant officer cleared. Four thousand one hundred and forty warrants. Remember, that may not be all cases from that year because they fall over from other years and some of them are like. Even ten year, ten years old, right? So then in in twenty eighteen, he did thirty seven hundred warrants. And twenty nineteen, he cleared three thousand four hundred and ninety five warrants. And twenty twenty, when we were shut down and some other stuff, he did one thousand six hundred and ninety three. And twenty. Twenty one, three thousand two hundred and thirteen bounce back and to date, he's done four hundred and fifty seven this year. And in twenty twenty two. So our warrant program is 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 working pretty good. Now I will tell you. When the court wasn't work, you know, when we weren't getting as many tickets and stuff, he was like picking through some of the the older things. So. You'll see and and even in twenty twenty two, there may be more warrant violations cleared than actually tickets that were written because they're. From other, other, you know, timeframes, other, other, other violations from years ago. So to sum up the 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 court itself, which shows you. Which shows you. You know, how the staff's working and how 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 the 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 court's operating. In twenty seventeen, we're talking about cases cleared, right? And twenty seventeen, we cleared six thousand eight hundred and fifteen. Cases that year, I think eighty one hundred were filed. We, we, the clearance to filed rate was eighty four, eighty four percent. Right? In twenty eighteen, we cleared sixty, six thousand four hundred and forty eight cases. That was about eighty percent of the of the cases, the ratio between cases filed and cases settled. Because some fall over or there's deferral arrangements where they get ninety days to pay ninety days to not getting tickets and then. They pay basically the full price of the fine, but if they do that, then we defer, we we call it a fee instead of a fine and then it gets deferred. So those may carry over into the next year, two or three months. So then in twenty nineteen. Six thousand five hundred and eighty four cases were cleared in our municipal court. That's in. Again, that was eighty six point three nine percent of what was filed in twenty twenty. Three thousand two hundred and twenty three cases were cleared. That was almost ninety percent ratio between what was filed and what was cleared because. Of course, we had a little bit more, you know, more time to work on things during that year. I, some of you guys had come up, but. Typically, the city pays me to come in from one thirty to whenever I get done, usually at six o'clock. To keep up because again, I have the responsibility of the court. It does, it doesn't really matter and Kurt knows you, if you're, if you're charged with the court, you have to. Take care of it. So during the entire pandemic, when we were zoom, I would show up what nine o'clock, you know, nine thirty? And then I would just stay when we got finished. So we get done about nine to six, I could do. Along with the help with Tina and you guys approving me to get the electronic signature programs and all that, we were able to like. Clear four hearings of some people that very, very limited technical ability. An hour. So we would go through and just work through it and we had to add a few, few extra court dates to keep up, but we kept up everything. As far as the court, if you guys ask me, we're behind on anything, everything's up to date with the exception, there may be some jury trials and some show causes which required in person. Which we really didn't get the thumbs up to start doing that stuff until until we start, I think we went back hybrid. We're, we're here live. And just to kind of. Service people that can't come in, we're still doing some hybrid stuff to clear as many, many cases as we possibly can. So. So we'll get the show causes and the and the jury trials knocked out before, before the, before the year's over. In twenty twenty one, we cleared four thousand seven hundred and thirty three cases, which was. Which in twenty twenty one was actually a hundred and nine percent, but those were cases of riches that he was bringing in some older cases. So we cleared a little bit more than what was filed. And to date, we've cleared two thousand five hundred and forty cases in twenty twenty two. Which is an eighty point five percent clearance to file ratio. Again, to, we've kept up all of this being down, one of our clerks. Having an infusion of tickets being written now that by the traffic division. So everything's good to go. As far as that goes, we've come up with some standing orders and Tina's put some really, really good efficiency. Programs in place. We are having a lot more people. Pay their tickets or get a like a window deal on a deferred or something before they come to court, which is nice. It's, it's, it's running, running smooth. So. Even when we get up to speed with volume, I think will our court dates will still probably stay a little smaller than they were back in the heyday because, because. During the pandemic, we got to figure out and utilize some technology and different things to 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 speed us up and Tina's done a really, really good job. At doing that. Court after the pandemic, we do live and virtual hearings, we e-sign documents, we have a decrease in the failure to appear violations. And we have, I think that's due to more people. Taking care of stuff before they go. We've implemented a plan where we're trying to call if we can before, before each court date. To remind them because we had to do that with Zoom and we noticed, wow, a lot more people are showing up. Now it may get a little out of hand as we start getting back to, you know, full speed. But there's a couple of things that we think technology wise that we were going to ask you guys to help us out with, and I think we can move that, move that down the road. I think you guys know this, but if you don't, when, when it's traffic citation is written, there's two columns, right? There's fines and costs. The fine goes to the city, the cost, we're basically an escrow agent, we keep it and then. The city will write the stated a check for that. Within the cost, there's these buckets, I like to call them, there's. Different little amounts of the cost the city may get to keep to or split with the state for, and the monies are usually earmarked like. For instance, the core technology fund. So that's created under. One oh two point zero one seven two, the criminal code of criminals procedure. But those funds can get earmarked and the city gets them and you keep them in an account for. But those funds can get earmarked and the city gets them and you keep them in an account for computer system, networks, hardware, software. Imaging systems, electronic kiosk, ticket writers, electronic dialers, e-signature software. Text from computer software, things like that. So. What we were gonna, what we were gonna ask the council is, you know, there's certain things that you can budget for and you have to, you know, have to figure out what you're gonna do with it. But if there's certain things that we're getting money for, that's earmarked, you guys can let us, you know, get something off of our wishlist. For lack of a better term, by just approving it at council, if the funds are there, you can say, okay, yeah, you can spend it on that. And it doesn't require an increase in budget because it's money that's coming in or sitting there. There's another, there's several of them, but the main ones that, 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 that everybody seems to, you know, talk about. And that really affects, there's the court security fund too. That one created under the same code of criminal procedure. Code section and you can use the funds for metal detectors, handheld walkthrough, bailiff and security personnel, electronic surveillance equipment. Purchase or repair bulletproof glass or bulletproofing, continuing education for security issues by security personnel. The warrant officers and their related equipment, signage, identification card systems, video teleconferencing. And some of them cross over to the security one and, and the technology one. But, but you can, that's another section where the money's earmarked. We have to ask the council for it. And if it's there, then you guys approve it, then we can spend that and it's not an increase in the line item on the budget. Then the other one, which is kind of interesting, I think it was as of twenty twenty, there's one called the efficiency fee fund. And that's the fund that kind of helps you be more efficient and electronic, different things like that. Well, violations prior to January twenty twenty, the city, you collected that off the time payment fee. If somebody wanted a time payment, a payment plan is going to go over twenty five, I mean, over thirty days, right? Thirty one days or what, you added twenty five dollars to the, to their, to their, what they owe and they call time payment fee. Violations prior to twenty twenty, the city got to keep ten percent of that and then the rest went to the state. So ten percent is two dollars and fifty cents off every one of the payment plans. Starting January one twenty, starting January one twenty twenty, the time payment fee was reduced to fifteen dollars. However, the city gets to keep the entire amount and it goes into this, it goes into this efficiency fund, which I think that's probably about one of the largest. One of the little buckets that, that goes in there. Now it's earmarked, those fees are earmarked for like e-signature software. E-signature pads, text from computer software, dialer programs. Maybe some special computer, any, anything that can help you be more efficient. So that, that fund right there, that was a big change, actually fifteen dollars in the city, the city keeps, keeps the whole thing. So part of my wish list, list is kind of, I don't know, it got corrupt and like it said to you. But. The first thing that I want to talk about was Tina's a, a level, almost a level three clerk, right? And I think we're to retain her and bring up, to keep up the market at some point in time, we need to think about she's, we're paying her. As a level three clerk and I've been calling little cities, I just didn't, couldn't get the salary survey, survey together. But I think we're probably fifteen thousand dollars low on what she's actually worked, but we're not asking, we're just asking, I'm just asking for something. Because she's a, a really, a really, really good job. The other thing that we need, or, or the other thing that, that I noticed that some of the cities are paying, they're having incentive pay. If you, you know, kind of like if you have a master's degree or a bachelor's degree and a couple of cities are paying, if you get certified one, two or three. You get nine hundred dollars a year per certification. At a minimum, it would be nice to have something like that. Because, you know, at least pays her for her knowledge and, and in our little city, recently, people have had time to study. But in our city, the size that we have, there's not many clerks that are as knowledgeable as she is and have the certification that she has. She knows more than some of the young lawyers that come in here when they want to know how to do something. She can't practice law, but she can walk them through it, you know? So. That's my, that's my pitch for, for my, for my clerk. Text from computer software. We found a program, it's about a hundred and twenty dollars a month when you pay for each person. I don't know if any of you guys are, do anything in your private business to where you're dealing with, with, I want to say millennials. But it's even seems to be bleeding over. They don't want to talk on the phone. They want, they want to text. Excuse me, I got bad allergies today. I'm choking. Anyway. They want to text. We find that when we're up here at court doing Zoom, if they're missing their hearing or they've, we'll text them and then we'll call, they won't answer your text. Oh, so sorry, I'm logging on, right? And with the tech software, we've, it's a little cumbersome to do it that way. But if we can get some text from the computer, the computer software. Even if you guys will just approve us paying it out of that efficiency fund, it would be fantastic. I promise you, it's gonna pay for itself. Because we are e-signature links, you can also text them. So we can cut and paste it into a text and send it. And they can click on it, takes them to the e-signature sites like Adobe. And we, we use right signature, it's a Citrix product, it's cheaper, it's way cheaper, but it works. So I can't even imagine working without it anymore. It's, it's allowed us to really breathe stuff along. So text for computer, we would, I mean, almost begging for it. We love, we love to have it. If you guys could approve it from, from the efficiency fund. That would be cool. Or if you could give us a line item, it's, it's not gonna, it's gonna be a hundred and twenty dollars or, or less per month. When we had the audit the last time, the only thing that, that, that the guy had an issue, not an issue with. But a regular accounting controls, if you're in, if you're in the retail or you're dealing with it. My clerks need a place to lock their, lock their money. That's, that's, that's court related, because remember, until there's a, there's a legal fiction sort of, we deposit our money with the, with the city, which is cool. You know, y'all are the bank and we're the, we're the court, because it's two separate entities and then we deposit it. The only lack of accounting control, and I think I asked for it last year, is just, I just need a little safer, the lock boxes for the judicial stamp for a few things. And we found one for twelve hundred dollars, I can probably find it even cheaper. But, but I, I'd like, I'd like to have that and then, then I think our, our accounting controls are perfect. We've got some standing orders and some policies in place that cover all of general accounting principles. I think, I think we're good with that. An electronic signature pad, I'd like two of them, I think I can get both of them for three hundred dollars. It's a little thing that would sit up here where when we pull the form up, now we're having to print it out, they sign it, then we have to make a copy and let them go. If we have the electronic signature pad, we can pull the form up, their deferral agreement, their disposal, whatever we're doing, they can sign on that. It puts it on the thing, then we just print one time, give it to them and they go and we can actually save the ones for us if we want electronically. We don't, we don't have to, we don't have to print too. So say paper and again, it's efficient, saves time. An auto phoned out or a robocall machine, and I don't know, I don't know. I did, I've done some research and it, it spans fifty dollars a month to, you can buy a software and we put on the computer and then we go with it. Again, it's efficiency wise, before we can issue a K P S right now, if somebody comes in, they make a deal with the court. And they, they don't keep it, used to, and it even says there, I can issue a warrant and put it into warrant, Rich can go out, collect from them, do whatever. Now we have to have, we have to, we have to contact them a second time or before we issue an F T A as well, right? Before we should F T A, we have to do the same thing. The way I read the statute and I've talked to several people, a phone caller touching them like that through the text programmer, through the phone call program. Counts. Then we can, then we can, then we can go ahead and issue it, saves a step from having to schedule them to come in for a Zoom hearing or for a live hearing. Then we can push the cases down the road. Boom, boom, boom. And then it, then I can, I can, I can put them into warrant. But it, so I'd like to do that and then on top of it, because you can do several little messages inside of it. The other thing that I'd like to do is, again, with the influx of, of the, of the, of the tickets from the traffic enforcement. And when we, they get up to speed, we'll be getting more tickets. It's gonna get too cumbersome to try to call everybody before the court date. But if I can, if I can run the program, cut and paste the, the Excel phone number section. Out of our report, we C S V it into it, it'll sit there and dial and then give them, hey, don't forget you have court at, you know, two o'clock on August. Whatever. And that'd go through and then it'd check off as it talks to people. I think that just increases the, a number of people that will show up and take care or take care of their violation prior to it. Because it's also gonna give them the, give them where they can go or if we have the text program, we're gonna do that too. Because you could auto, have it auto do, and it to have the link where they can just go on and either take care of their citation or they can show up. Or, you know, contact the clerk and we'll do some sort of a window deferred or something to, to just move things along. I think that's, I probably ran out of my time and that's all, that's all I have. But I, I will, we got to answer questions for anybody and I'll, I'll be glad to work with Tina Ryan to provide you guys anything if you need to speculate. Like a council would need to do on what, what, what the court's gonna do for you guys. So, but, but if you have anything and, and all of you guys, I should have my phone number, if not, you can call me anytime.
Thank you, Judge, Mr. May.
Judge, I've been an observer of a lot of judges over my years and the things that make them happy are what I'm interested in. And the big observation is the relationship with the clerks is essential. And if they are doing their job efficiently, they will make the judge efficient and productive. So I, I note that this is the numero uno in the listing. So I take it that's your priority, correct?
Yes, sir. Okay, sure. I haven't had it. I think we've been working together since twenty thirteen and I haven't had a single complaint. Ever. No, on Tina. I, I will say, I had, I had another clerk and I would get phone calls every once in a while, but, but never on Tina.
Well, I, I'm, I'm not gonna air any dirty laundry for other people tonight. But if you could bring to us some of the comparables with other clerks.
Okay.
Throughout the county, I can help a little bit and see if we can get a variant suggestions and address that.
And, and the only thing I just want to be fair and I don't want to, you know, just retaining quality people. I mean, in my job right now, it's, it's, I mean, I, I'm just like the incentive programs, like the, like the captain and the chief were talking about. I mean, I'm trying to do whatever, whatever it can to retain quality people and I don't want to, you know, I want to just make sure that we're being fair. And, and that's the, you know, that, that's, it's important to me. One other thing I wanted to say real quick, as far as the traffic guy, just so y'all know. Have zero complaints and people are getting tickets. I had a resident come up last time I was in court live. And he started talking to me and, and, and he says, yeah, man, I got a ticket and I haven't seen him. He was saying, I haven't ever seen him over here, then this, now they're all over the place. And he's talking about that and I said, well, I said, you know, maybe you and other people. That you, it was hard for you guys to get out of your neighborhood because of these streets going through and people that, that were, were speeding and doing all that stuff. And the council acted on what, on, on what the people wanted and they, and they put a guy on the road. And you know, he said, you know what, you're right. He said, thank you. And he's, and it didn't, didn't complain at all. He's like, yep, that's it. Can I do something to keep it off my record? But other than that, it was fantastic. So the residents, I think, appreciate it and, and I think Officer Singleton's doing a great job, Captain. I have, I'm nothing but, you know, good stuff, which is weird to get compliments from people that are pulling people over to get tickets. This department, that's happened more time than not, and I try to be good about it. And Tina reminds me, I try to send an email to one of the management over there and say, hey, by the way, so and so, they came in and they said the officer did a good deal. And they paid their ticket and they left and they, so it, it, it's, it's just shows how leadership bleeds, bleeds down too.
I appreciate those comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. May, Mr. Esbrand.
Judge, just a couple of things.
Yes, sir.
If I recall correctly, why won't we try to recall correctly, I'll ask you, your wishlist, how much of this is a repeat from last year?
The safe.
Uh huh.
And the, the dialer.
Okay.
And the probably the text, the texting software. You guys approved for me to get a kiosk years ago, but it just, we never got one. Because we thought that that would help out with people coming in that they could just go to the kiosk if they don't want to wait. But those were the, those were the repeat ones. That's why I was kind of mentioning if we could, if there's money in a fund where y'all don't have to increase it.
And, and that's the second part of the question I want to ask. All of those could be purchased out of the efficiency fee fund, correct?
Yes, or the technology when.
Okay. And just to make sure I understand the presentation correctly, where you have the total year to date at the bottom of each slide. That's the amount that's in the fund.
That, that's, I, we'll have to verify that with the C manager.
Just generally.
We had a, we, we were looking at a report and that's how we interpreted it, but I, I was running behind, I didn't have time to verify.
That's okay. Yeah, but generally speaking, it's, it's, it's not like, there's approximately fifteen thousand dollars sitting in this fund. Give or take, it doesn't matter that much, but the requests that you're making are negligible compared to the fifteen thousand there. Why did this, did we not have the, a discussion last year about using this fund or do you recall?
I don't, I don't remember. I think one, we just got busy on it, probably got busy probably. The last time we came in and talked about it, we were still doing, we're still doing Zoom court and we, you know, we were, we're doing all that. Because we just went back to regular on, in April.
Okay, okay. And then my last question is related to also to the efficiency fee fund. You have a note here that it's infrequently collected fee. Do you have any sense of what? What percentage of your client base here has, has asked to use it?
The official, well, it's gonna be all of the, it's gonna be, I mean, I could probably run a report and tell you guys, it's gonna be anything that's a payment plan over thirty days. So those are gonna be on there. If they do a deferred, you don't have to add that. It's gonna be on the, it's gonna be on K P Ss or ones where they plead. And they just want, they just want to pay. They just want time to pay. So it's just a time, time pay or ones where they default on their deferred. And then we turn it into a payment plan.
Yeah, and, and that's really the question I'm asking is if, if you have a sense of how many asked to have some kind of deferred payment. A guesstimate is completely fine. I'm just curious to get a sense.
Say probably ten percent maybe, maybe fifteen, you think, time payment? Yeah, probably.
Okay, great. Thank you.
But I, I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared.
No, it's okay. I, I just wanted a little context. Thank you.
Judge, you let counsel know, I think it's late spring when you started back up in person court, right?
Yes.
April.
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
I'd know this year.
Twenty two, yes. They, they were, they were a little harder on, on the municipal courts about, about, you know, what classy misdemeanors. And you, you know, a couple of judges down south were having live court and Chief Justice of the Supreme Court said, I don't know if you saw that. But he sent a letter down, I want to speak to, actually he sent it to Judge Harrell, I think, or the, the district tenant said, I'm gonna talk to that guy. And you tell me why you still have it in court when I told him about that court.
Yeah, actually, Councilman Danes, we, we shut the door, I think, March, I mean, about April twenty twenty to the public. Until give or take July of last summer, so, which obviously impacted.
Counsel, do you have any more questions for Judge? Okay, Judge, we call, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, guys. Appreciate it. Apologize for my sinus issue. Mobile problem.
Okay, next up, we have presentation discussion on the preliminary F Y twenty twenty three budget for the administration department. Mr. Appley.
Thank you, Merrick. Could you fire that up real quick?
Yes.
I saved the best department for last. I'm just kidding. So as you can see through this process, it's a team effort and we have a very good collective team for the city of Castle Hills. We run through this real quick. Our adopted budget for administration is a million eighty seven, six eighty four. Through June, right now, we're, we're about on target, about five seventy five. Administration consists of myself and assistants to the city manager, permit clerk, city secretary. Fiscal officer and our co-compliance officer. The current line item expenses, as I've asked our departments to do in previous, I will relay some things that were concerning. As far as line, line items where we're at, we have a miscellaneous line item that we budgeted for six thousand. We surpassed that because we had to pay for that S and P rating of eleven thousand three seventy five, which will be a part of a budget amendment later this year. But I want to bring that to your attention because that line item's over. And then postage, we do the postage for all departments. Obviously USPS has gone up and will continue to go up. We're about seventy nine hundred right now. And then, interesting enough, the line item for legal fees, just as a note, we budget eighty five thousand this year. And the five year average has roughly been about a hundred and twenty eight thousand. And we're only about twenty six thousand five hundred through June with Mr. Small Services. And again, I, correlation, I don't know, the reduction of legal expenses over the last few years. But right now, I think we've got a good target on his budget directly for his services. So now we have a line item for election expense. This was budgeted seven thousand. We're expensing that 4,900, uh, will probably still receive, uh, another bill, I believe, from Ms. Callan's office for the May election. And then of course, if the election is held later this year, it'll impact the operating budget itself going over on that line item. One, one note, uh, Chief Zuniga mentioned was the sewer line. That impacted our administration budget for building, uh, building maintenance. So we had to repair, uh, pretty much the direct sewer line that it's into the building due to, um, I believe it was age and, um, needed to be replaced because it was outdated. So that impacted us for about 30,000, um, earlier this year. So. And another note real quick on our, um, our salaries, um, obviously we've discussed as the audit, we've been looking for a finance director. And, and so we've been using our financial consultants. And there's obviously some salary savings in there and benefits because we're using her as a consultant for assistance with reconciliation and investment purposes. And of course, uh, during this budget process. For next year, um, for our line items, uh, we're still working on having a solid number for administration. But we see a few increases, obviously, in postage, newspaper publications, city engineer plat fees. Some of those areas have gone up, um, newspaper publications, uh, mostly for zoning, um, BOA. And of course, city council purposes. If you recall, the cost for, um, application fee was changed a couple of years ago. So that actually, um, sort of impacted the newspaper publication, plus they've gone up. So we will adjust that line item appropriately. Uh, a minor increase as we continue with abatement, right away mowing services to maintain assists with, um, properties. Uh, instead of our public works and abating a property, we have a contract service going in and doing it. And then of course, potential beautification projects, just like the monument that was done on Cass Hills. We want to work to address in the next year's budget, uh, travertine monument. And then, um, do some landscaping here at, uh, City Hall moving forward. And then, um, budget and expense for online services. Right now, we're looking at a few options for online service for permitting. Um, and then there's a cost for a mechanism where, like on municipal court, as a judge says, people can get online and pay. So what we want to be able to do is to, um, facilitate an online service for permits. And then people were able to pay their permits online. But right now, we have to develop that mechanism and, um, work within code to make sure it's, uh, the proper mechanism for people to pay and of course, credit card. And then I have a note here, just replacement of the carpet in the chambers here. Uh, we're going to look at, uh, putting some, uh, replacing the carpet, maybe in the administrative office with the current budget because we do have funding for that right now in the current budget. But I, I would like to work on replacing the carpet here in the council chambers. So I, I don't know, um, it probably predates Rick. I'm not sure, but, um, I'll have to ask him, but I would say 25, 30 years old. So. Any questions you have on the administration budget?
Thank you, Mr. Rappley, uh, Mr. May.
Just one, do we have any idea what's underneath this carpet?
Uh, you know, when, when we had them come in and do some under, when they, they came in and did the sound system underneath the dais to correct, um, what looked like years of bad wiring, they had to run the line to the podium here to connect. And so they did get to see some small glimpse of what was under there. Um, I believe it's concrete, but it looks pretty bad.
So it's not finished concrete, it's not, um, parquet floors, nothing like that?
No.
No such looks, sir.
No. So, uh, obviously we need to look and invest in this, um, this council chambers. Not only aesthetically, but, uh, find some quotes, get some commercial, uh, carpeting in here. And then, um, in tandem, our administration offices, if you have seen those, I'm concerned about employees, just allergies in general. So.
Mr. Esbrand.
Mr. Rappley, see you have a request for increase for postage, newspaper publications. Are you not anticipating, uh, any additional funding that will be needed for the continued development of the website?
That's already budgeted in there. Um, I don't see an increase to that. The only increase we had was paying for the, the new website itself. But we don't see anything from a maintenance standpoint going.
Okay.
Yeah. It's already budgeted, there's already a line item in there, but we don't foresee an increase, even though we've have a brand new website.
Ms. Danes.
Okay, this might be a question for Mr. Joyce more than it is Mr. Rappley. But do you know what year this building was built?
Nope.
We'll, we'll work on getting you an answer for that one.
I'd say when I was in middle school, but.
So 45 years ago.
Come on. Come on.
Do we have any other questions for Mr. Rappley, uh, Mr. Joyce?
Mr. Rappley, you have any thoughts on the cost of living increases and things like that? I remember we talked a lot about that last year and there's nothing.
So again, last year, we, we, the employees, uh, were, were provided a two and a half, uh, increase. My goal was actually to get to three. The previous year, they did not get a COLA. Um, and so I want to be able to not only work on that, as I mentioned previously, we want to work on a comprehensive look. We do have cities who've done very good salary comparisons of positions, similar cities to our similar budgets. And again, it comes back to retaining and then trying to recruit good employees. We do have employees here, um, that have been here for a while. The administration office doesn't have like, say, police, fire and public works where they have a, uh, a scale based on the number of years. Uh, so I wanted to look at that. Again, till we get a comprehensive look of total expenses versus preliminary revenues and see what we're working with. We'll have an idea of what we can do, both public safety, administration, municipal court across the board. But to answer your question, um, I'm, I'm, I'm hoping, because we missed a year of COLA. Uh, and of course, the cost of living is, is increasing, that we could probably project another two and a half and or three for our employees this year. If funding is available. So.
Mr. Rappley, I'm assuming that any request like that will probably be accompanied by a salary survey as well as surveys across.
Yes, we have two, two neighboring cities that did a very good, um, review of salaries over 10 to 15 cities in the area. Whether it's public safety administration, uh, it covers pretty much every position that we have and more, um, from other cities.
Thank you, Mr. Paul.
I have a question. If that's something we're going to look at, shouldn't have been done prior to where we are as far as where we are in the budget right now? Because there's not really going to be enough time to do the thing appropriately, I wouldn't think.
Well, I think, again, the idea is that we'll submit a proposed budget based on the, uh, certification and pay scales in the departments that are currently there. And then figure how much we have funding wise after that and bring it towards council to say, here's what I'm recommending.
Yeah. Well, last year, we kind of did that. We had a budget and then we went back in two or three months later, which I didn't think was appropriate personally. You know, I, my feelings, I talked about at the time. If we're going to do anything like that, everything needs to be done, I would think, within the context of the budget that we're talking about at the time. Just my opinion.
I agree, Mr. Paul, and noted from last year. A-again, as I mentioned that night, we want to be able to, um, bring you a, a proposed budget that's balanced. See what we have to work with. As I mentioned, my number one goal was looking at the retirement and our compensation of our salaries for our positions across the board, um, which obviously includes public safety.
Mr. Esbrand.
I, I think I, I would just want to echo Mr. Paul's statement here. I think that there were some issues last year regarding this. I think there's a lot of economic conditions we need to think of. When we have, and that we give ourselves ample time to discuss this, that it not just be something that's brought to us as part of the proposed budget, let's check the box and move on. I, I think we're going to have to take that path on the, I believe we're going to have to take that path on the number of things, given the increase in costs. So I, I hope that we will be giving ourselves ample time to have this discussion when, when we get to it. And I don't know if that's at the August 2nd, uh, meeting or when that would come up, Mr. Rappley. Is that when we would have this discussion on the 2nd?
I will deliver the budget that night and give you sort of the overview of that proposed budget. But do we do have four scheduled budget workshops, two if needed, uh, to cover those before the final adoption?
Okay.
And if we have to spend a budget workshop that's dedicated on that, we will. But then obviously we should have some good numbers to see what we can do. Not only with public safety, but administration and COLAs look like as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Any further questions, counsel? Okay. At that point, uh, we will entertain a motion to adjourn, Mr. May.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second? Mr. Joyce, all in favor?
I think Nora's trying to get on.
Uh, all in favor? Uh, unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Meeting is 7:52, meeting is adjourned. Oh, and now Nora's in a sing, happy birthday to Mr. Esbrand. Everybody have a good evening. Happy birthday, Mr. Esbrand.